Sounds like a good case.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is six o'clock on September twenty second.
How's her?
Here you go.
Here. Kent.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Manki. Ben Rice White.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Young.
Here.
You have a form?
Thank you.
I've moved to a pretty agenda.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Williams, second.
Williams.
Okay, so all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, proposed. Motion carried.
Our district mission is to teach all, reach all. And our vision, Urbendale will be a school district that brings learning to life for everyone. And our mission is to partner with stakeholders to teach all and reach all through governance of board policy and operating protocols.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna kick the night off with something really kind of cool. We would love to recognize Mr. Pettit, fifth grade teacher and reserve police officer. He will be formally recognized on September twenty fifth by the Urbendale Chamber of Commerce for being the Urbendale Citizen of the Year. Congrats. Taking a photo if you want, yes. Thank you. It is people.
Play the one spot.
It's just y'all. Yeah. Here we go. Okay. And another fun point tonight will be Karen Acres is here for their showcase.
Hi, I'm Dana Wilson. I'm the principal at Karen Acres Elementary. And I have our fourth grade teachers here with us, Lindsay Williams and Renee Kruger. And some current fifth graders who are gonna talk about one of their project-based learning projects they did at the end of last year as fourth graders that has carried into work this year.
I'll let you drive the presentation. Just sit down there.
All right, I am Mrs. Kruger.
I'm Mrs. Williams.
My name is Evelyn.
My name is Rachel.
My name is Ava.
My name is Lila.
My name's Dan.
I'm Simon.
And we're here to talk about our hunger PBL and hunger in our community and how last year we started a school and community garden.
What is project-based learning, PBL? PBL is cross-curricular, student-led, meaningful, and engaging. Applicable to real-world experiences, accessible to all learners. PBL connects our students and school to the larger community.
While we had chosen projects about hunger, it connects our social studies unit about the Great Depression and Dust Bowl and the hardships people faced then and today. It led to our SEC topic of empathy. Students at our school don't have snacks to eat each day. In two thousand twenty-three, Meals from the Heartland reported that one in eight Iowa children do not have enough food to eat.
Feeding America reports three hundred and forty-four thousand five hundred and fifty people are facing hunger in Iowa. And one hundred ten thousand five hundred of them are children. One in nine people face hunger in Iowa. One in six children face hunger in Iowa. Charitable programs are unable to fully support those facing hunger. This shows that there is a hunger problem in our country, state, and community.
So, we started our hunger PBL project in two thousand twenty-three. And how that project started was we had local organizations come speak to our classes like Ucan, the Urbendale Food Pantry, and Meals from the Heartland. And our students in two thousand twenty-three decided to partner with Meals from the Heartland to positively impact hunger.
So that year we did a school-wide coin drive and we raised over six hundred and fifty-five dollars as a school. Both fourth grade classes that year got to volunteer at Meals from the Heartland and we packaged meals that were sent to people in need both locally and across the world. And students, as part of this project, also wrote letters to people in our school and the community about ways that they could positively impact hunger.
So here are just some pictures of our students talking to our whole school about our coin drive. And we were able to kind of graph their growth to see how many coins we could raise. And it was a grand total of six fifty-five twenty-three.
This is some of the students that year packaging meals at Meals from the Heartland. They were having a great time.
Yep. Here's our picture of us all in our hairnets once we were finished packaging our meals.
And then at the end of our experience, they kind of sent us this graphic just to kind of show the overall impact we were able to make. So at the top, it just says that we packaged a total of twenty-two thousand five hundred meals. Eighty-six kids were fed for an entire year based off of what we packaged. We had forty-seven volunteers, adult and students. We packaged a hundred and four boxes. We used two thousand two hundred and fifty pounds of rice in those meals and nine hundred pounds of soy. And then they did come to our school and we packaged an additional six packages in our classrooms, which was kind of cool too, for a grand total of twenty-two thousand five hundred and six meals.
Twenty-five, twenty-four. During the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five school year, our fourth grade students voted to start a school slash community garden. In order to get the whole school involved, fourth graders surveyed each classroom and staff member about which fruits should be sold or planted within a garden. The top five choices were carrots, cucumbers, lettuce, tomatoes, and bell peppers. We partnered with Kathy Mayos from Nutrition Services to help with our project.
Here's a picture of our garden currently, taken two weeks ago. You can see it's still blooming. We're still getting produce from it.
This is some of the students. You might recognize them. Some of them here on our planting day. And there's another picture of them on planting day.
What can the garden be used for? It could be used to make different foods in our school and possibly other foods in other schools. And can help students try new foods. On September fourth of this year, our students had the option of choosing green pepper strips during lunch that came from our garden. This encouraged students to try a new vegetable because it was grown at our school.
The food from the community garden will be used for the summer program, which allows students to have fruit, food during the summer months when school's out. If we have extra food available, people from the community might be able to come pick some fruits and vegetables as well.
All right, here are some student takeaways from each of the projects. So from Meals from the Heartland, students were in charge of learning how to count the money that we collected.
Students also learned how to collaborative, collaboratively work together as a school to reach an common goal.
Students learned about how soy and other crops grown in Iowa are used to help feed people around the world.
In the garden, they learned what greens slash vegetables are complementary with each other and can be grown near each other. They learned how to apply their knowledge of area and perimeter when planning out a garden. They applied their knowledge of soil from science to know what it needed to make plants grow.
Well, students learned about organizations that help fight hunger locally and around the world. Students wrote an explanatory letter informing others about hunger in our community and what they can do to help. Students learned that even students slash kids can make a difference locally and around the world. Any questions?
Thank you.
No questions?
Well, I have a question. So, when your garden is done producing, what are you going to do? What are you gonna do with that space?
Great question. I think that some stuff had like a later growth time, but I think it will probably just sit empty during the winter months. Yeah.
Another reason that idea could probably work better is that it gives more fertilizer for next year.
Get ready for the next crop, right?
What was the favorite vegetable that you tried?
At school, we've only had the peppers, right?
Hopefully the cucumbers.
Do you know how many, how many, how many vegetables you were able to produce this year? Did you keep a count in charge?
It got to play all the five. And then I know there were additional, like they did pea pods, but I don't know that those made it. There were radishes, onions. So there were a few additional and besides the five that they voted for, so.
Are you going to expand?
Maybe, yes, hopefully.
See what next, or this year's class wants to do, I guess, so.
Okay, we are going to talk about the facilities. And I'm sorry, I don't know your names.
Garrett Pocup. So yeah, I work with, with Tim Oswald. That's gonna be a tough act to follow. I feel like I should run first. Try to be as entertaining. So I'm passing out. I know you had a handout that was already printed. I promise there was only a couple minor changes, so if you already reviewed it, there's not gonna be much that's changed. But there was just a couple numbers that after we talked with the architect slightly changed. And so maybe just being a perfectionist, I wanted to make sure the document was reflecting the right amount. So I believe it was last month, Tim was here speaking to the board and he talked more specifically about your capacity from SAVE and PEPL as well as how do you get authority for those different funding mechanisms? If you have questions about those since then, I'm happy to answer those. But tonight, we're gonna focus more on the geo bond side of things and how do you get authority? What does that look like? So, we'll talk through that and then at the end, if there's questions, be happy to answer any of those. Tonight is really meant to be more of kind of broad stroke to give you an idea of what's available and not necessarily putting a plan of finance together. We understand there's still conversations to be had with your architect and figure out, you know, what projects are important and sort of prioritize those. So, geo bonds, a couple limitations and just kind of assumptions that were made. The goal was to solve for an overall tax rate of seventeen ninety-nine or stay just below that. So inclusive of all of your other levies outside of the debt service levy. So your general fund, your management fund, your PEPL funds, things like that. So, we looked at, and your district has done like a five-year forecast, a five-cast model. And so I know you've likely reviewed that, but that's what we use to look out into the future and look at what are your future levy rates gonna be? And then let us know what's available within the debt service levy rate. So you can see in that third bullet point, the district does have some needs to utilize the cash reserve levy, generate some cash over the next couple years, which really doesn't leave a ton of capacity with your existing debt. So really, your existing geo bonds will encompass that three-dollar debt service levy rate. And then we're setting the debt, the tax levy in FY twenty-nine to utilize the full four oh five. So that's the assumption being made. And then you can see the tax levy rate will drop in FY twenty thirty to around three dollars and sixty-five cents. And then after that, dropping to about three dollars and sixty cents. So again, out into those future years, now we're starting to get a little bit further out, but that's the assumption. And again, trying to solve for keeping that overall tax rate at the seventeen ninety-nine. One thing to keep in mind, you know, Tim may have mentioned this last time, but election cycles did change for geo bonds. Previously, I think it was prior to two thousand twenty-three, districts had five different voting options for geo bonds in a two-year cycle. Now that changed. The legislature changed that. Now you have one bite at the apple, which is November of each year. So you really have one chance each year, November. We just, you know, passed the filing deadline for districts that are gonna vote this year in November. Just for context, if you're curious, I think there's something like forty-four schools in Iowa that are gonna be on the ballot for geo bonds this November. Last year, it was thirty-four, thirty-five. So this year, slightly more. But these are the first couple years of that new law change with the one voting date. So just some context there. Twenty-year bonds would be the length. You can do shorter, but twenty is the maximum. And generally speaking, you would vote in November, the bonds would then be sold typically around the May-June timeline or timeframe of the next year. Depending on, you know, working with your architect and construction team, if they're not gonna bid until later that fall, you can occasionally push that back when you're gonna actually issue the debt. So assuming all those assumptions above, we're looking at what would it look like to vote in either November of twenty-six or November of twenty-seven? And then we're assuming borrowing in two thousand twenty-eight. So that's kind of the assumptions we're being made. And you can see in the orange highlighted section, could generate around a forty-three point two million dollar borrowing that would generate around forty-two point seven million of total project funds net of all the different bonding costs. A couple assumptions and one of the changes that if you look really closely that was made was in that first bullet point under that that says assumes current interest rates plus about a quarter percent just for market movement. The original numbers that we showed, nothing changed. We just, there was just kind of a typo where we didn't put that in there. So we're assuming that, you know, rates could go up another about quarter percent and what we're showing would still be accurate. If rates started to drop over the next couple of years, then your borrowing capacity might go up a little. If rates go up more than a quarter percent, maybe your borrowing capacity goes down. So that's one thing that we'll look at is what are interest rates gonna do? But forty-two point seven with kind of current rates. Valuation growth is another factor. You know, between now and two thousand thirty, your valuations are gonna grow year over year. We tried to use a fairly moderate assumption. And this would be one thing that as a board, you could tell us be more aggressive, less aggressive. But we're assuming four point four percent taxable valuation growth, which is just mirroring your ten-year average is how we came up with that. Again, we're assuming the bonds are sold in two thousand twenty-eight for a twenty-year bond. So the first fiscal year for that tax would be FY twenty-nine, out through two thousand forty-eight would be that twenty-year debt cycle. And then purposes of the list of projects that you can see there, again, this isn't an all-encompassing list and these are rough estimates. So there's still work to be done with your architect and finding total project costs. But we're assuming the administration office. We've seen a few different estimates from your architect, but around eleven million is one of the estimates. And that was the other change that we made. We originally had, I think, five million in there, but that amount went up slightly. So eleven million for that, the middle school football, two million, softball, three million, baseball, five million. Again, these are just kind of rough estimates, round figures, so not meant to be all-encompassing. And then the CTE building, which would be kind of the larger portion of the project, we're just assuming that that would just take up whatever's left. And so if you only use geo bonds to fund this list of projects, then you'd have to structure or set up the CTE project to fit whatever that is, twenty-one point five million, whatever that is that's left over. So then in terms of just project list and funding, this is just kind of a what-if and that there are, this is where we can start to be a little bit more creative and actually create more of a plan of finance. Where what if you use what Tim talked about last time and you leveraged your voter PEPL to pay for the baseball and football? Which he talked about last time, you could generate around seven million from your voter PEPL. That would be again, sold in two thousand twenty-seven, out through the authority of your voter PEPL, which is through two thousand thirty-five. And then you can see there still is a net, you know, positive balance in your PEPL fund out through two thousand thirty-five, including all of the other, you know, things that you're gonna pay cash for in your ten-year facility plan. Similarly, the SAVE bond, Tim talked about your kind of maximum capacity. This isn't leveraging your maximum capacity, but just what if you did, you paid for the administration office as well as softball? And that was roughly eight million. Between those two, might be slightly more now that the administration office is maybe a little bit more. But that'll be determined what the final price is there. We're assuming, you know, bond sold in two thousand twenty-six, so come next year. And then a shorter borrowing out through two thousand thirty-three, so really like a seven to eight-year borrowing. You could extend that longer to have, you know, smaller annual debt payments. And then what if you used the new geo bond to pay for the CTE building? So could mean that it's a smaller, you know, borrowing, or it could mean you could build a larger CTE facility. So those are just some assumptions. Again, there's a lot of wiggle room where we can get creative. And this is where I think if Tim were here, he would urge you to just think about maybe setting, you know, goals and priorities. And said, you know, what is priority number one? What's priority number two? And I think that helps to determine, okay, what's the best plan moving forward? So again, things to consider, that seventeen ninety-nine overall tax rate, is that a high priority? Our understanding is that is a high priority, but is that, you know, number one? And then as you start to figure out what are the different project amounts and hey, what's most important for the district and for the board? So I think there's lots of ways where we can get creative and create different financing plans that work for the district. I think this is where, hopefully this is just kind of a broad stroke overview to give you an idea of what's available within your geo bond capacity. And then as you start to have more conversations with your architect and just as a board, we can start to have more conversations, let you digest this information. And then we can come back for future meetings and start to maybe hone in on more specific financing plans. And, and we can bring various options and talk about the pros and cons. And you can let us know what, what you think is in the best interest of the district. The back page, if you're curious, just as kind of, I don't know, as finance math guys, we always feel like we gotta show our work. I don't know. When I went to school, we always had to show our work in math class, so I'm still, still in that, that realm. So a lot of numbers, but this is just showing how do we come up with the forty-three point two million dollar borrowing? And then on the far two right columns, you can see the second from the, the right is the, the debt service levy rate. And then the far right column is showing your overall tax rate. And so, again, there's a lot of intricate math and Excel, Excel math going on there, but that's how we came up with that. And if you're curious, that's, that's how we came up with that. So that's what the back page is. But I'll open it up for questions if there are any. Or Steve, if there's anything I missed from conversations that you've had with Tim as well, feel free to jump in. Okay, well, thank you. If there's questions, feel free to filter them our way. So, thank you.
So we are on to the superintendent's report. We have noticed Dr. Dackett is out ill today, so we will not do the more you know. But we do have the IASB convention coming up in November. If you are attending, please let Ms. Julie know at your soonest convenience so she can start the registration process to register her as our delegate today, so. Student representatives. Falcon Rice and Adrian, right?
Adrian.
Adriana, sorry.
Um, well, I talked to Mr. Cover this morning. He said he didn't say anything about what we would say. But from last time, the phone policy, um, the, they're still figuring out the music thing. Everything's still blocked, which is kind of a struggle in some classes when, when you watch like educational YouTube videos. But in that class, you can get it revoked like from Go Guardian. But from any update from the music thing that Kate brought up, there hasn't been any update right now.
Yeah, just going on with like the phone policy, I feel like, yeah. Yeah, there just hasn't really been a lot of updates at the school right now. Not a lot of things going on right now.
But homecoming is next week and there are lots of students excited. And we had Hoco Court voting earlier today, so it's been exciting for the seniors, so, yeah.
Great. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you. And we have one public comment this evening. This is Rachel River. And she's gonna stay where she's at because she's a little challenge. So thank you for coming tonight. Board policy limits comments to three minutes per speaker. For confidentiality reasons, the board cannot discuss specific personnel matters. We appreciate your comments. The board has significant interest in maintaining the decorum of its meetings and expects that members of the public and board will address each other with civility. The orderly process of the board meeting will not be interfered with or disrupted by public comment. Only individuals, only individuals recognized by the board president will be allowed to speak and comments by others are out of order. If disruptive, the individual causing disruption may be asked to leave the board meeting. Defamatory comments may be subject to legal action. And Steve is usually And Steve is usually
Okay. Okay, my name is Rachel River. I'm a llama four. I have deep ties to the Urbandale community. I have kids who go to Urbandale. I worked for the Urbandale Food Pantry. I'm a school bus driver for Urbandale, transporting preschool age to seniors during the school day when I don't have a broken foot and can work. I am, and I live in the community. I'm also the steward of Durham School Bus Services, meaning I represent the school bus drivers and monitors who transport our students every day. I wanted, I wanted to bring into your attention that the drivers and monitors in Urbandale have been working without a union contract since September eleventh of this year. Durham has not reached an agreement with us. We've been in negotiations for months and are asking for a reasonable wage and better retirement options. It's actually great that Karen Ankers came to discuss hunger in Iowa because food insecurity is something that I wanted to discuss. Some of our employees are part of those in poverty and are food insecure. Like I stated, I worked for Urbandale Food Pantry, and I have seen so many of my Durham coworkers come due to food insecurity themselves. We get food, we get four hours a day only on school days. We love our students, we love the district and the community. We don't want to cause a work stoppage and keep students from the transportation that they need. Durham is going to force us a work, to force us to a work stoppage if they cannot come to a reasonable agreement. Most of our employees are working multiple jobs and still living paycheck to paycheck. Many of us are under the federal poverty level, and yet we all come every day and give it all to take care of our kids, our students. We would ask that you support our workers and tell Durham to negotiate a contract in good faith so that we can come to work with a full belly, a good night's sleep, and feeling appreciated for the work that we do. As a parent of disabled kids, I'm concerned about the students with IEPs in the event of a work stoppage and how the district plans to maintain their IEP requirements for transportation. I'm concerned for athletes like my daughter and how they will make it to and from their events. I'm concerned about the students who don't get fed during the day if they don't have a school or a bus to school. The members voted, the members, uh, our members voted and passed a strike authorization, and our contract is expired. Again, we don't want to strike. None of us do. We love our jobs and we love the kids. Many of us have kids in the district, but Durham is forcing us into an outcome of choosing between our students and putting food on the table for our kids at home. We ask the district and parents reach out to Durham to encourage a fair contract resolution. Over the last contract, the district revenue agreement included a five percent annual service hike. The Durham contract only included a two percent raise for the drivers and monitors. We are trying to keep up, and it's getting harder every day. Please help us secure a fair deal that allows us to continue to do the work that we love for all of our students.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak.
I would move the motion.
I would move to move the consent agenda, bring the consent agenda forward.
Thank you.
Need will second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or concerns?
I just had a thank you to Mr. Finkin, Finkin at the middle school for his new clubs.
Yeah.
That, that he's, we'll take him up. I was pretty excited when I got it. I mean, two of them, maybe he's sponsored to go. Thank you to him.
Yeah. Um, Steve, I did have a question. You and I talked a little bit this, this afternoon. When reviewing the bills, there was a bill from the city titled Douglas Urbanization Project for five relocations at price tag of about four hundred and seventeen dollars apiece. Could you explain that for us, please?
Yeah, the construction project that went along Douglas from Hy-Vee down, I'm not sure how far up there we're at.
Here's what I found.
Did you even see? See her on that one? But they had to move the fiber lines to new locations to complete that project. And so they billed everybody who's in the union, running through their boxes that they have on their, they charge each of us fat four hundred and seventeen for each of the four locations that they move. So that's what that's for.
Thank you. Any other questions? And we're ready for a roll call.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Ben Ricefight?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. On to our action items with the first one being the allow plan.
I'm going to assume there's no question since we did cover this, so I would move to approve the allow plan.
Williams, second. Williams?
And we can, it's not roll call, right? So all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next is the School Improvement Advisory Committee, also known as CYAC. It's the member list that we talked about the last meeting.
I would move to approve the list for CYAC for twenty-five, twenty-six.
Does Jenny want to stay on it?
I think I, I'll switch to like when the new board is in place. Then if somebody wants to like fill in as that person, then I can just stay on as a community member.
Okay.
You'll have to
I was just making sure that we weren't tying you up past the date, Mike. No, you said you would do this.
I'll stay on for this year as a community person. I'm going to add another board member later.
We'll have to revisit that after the election in November and then sort people in. But for right now, we establish that.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Williams, second. Williams?
Thank you. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And then the teach-all, reach-all, team recognition that Brandon presented last.
I appreciate this effort a great deal, and everyone's buying into it, and I would move to approve this plan.
Young will second.
Young, okay.
Thank you. And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We've got a whole slew of new action items. First one being special ed supplemental, supplement and approve the school budget review committee.
Want to flip to the next page?
I can.
Perfect. The special ed supplement is a report that calculates the revenue and expenditures for the district for students that are tuitioned in and out for the final calculation of district over or under expenditures in special ed. If you click the next one. The special ed deficit is down six hundred and twenty thousand dollars and nine hundred and sixty-four from last year primarily due to changes that Melanie has put in place for the Medicaid billings. And then we made some changes in how we bill out our tuition to other districts. We charge in what's called an individualized expense, and that is basically like if there, if a, I, an IEP assigns a one-on-one student to a, with a student, then we are able to pass that expense on to another district. We've not been doing that for several years, and so that's something that we picked up. And then our expenses are up seven point nine percent from the previous year, and that's because we serve twenty-eight more students. But with those changes we made in revenue, we're up fourteen percent from the previous year. So it's a more, previous deficit was one point seven million, so that's a huge change in one year.
Can you explain this whole process just for people?
Sure. What that, what we get to do by having this approved is we can re-get spending authority for our next year. So for this current year in twenty-five, twenty-six, that allows us to get spending authority if we need to recoup those costs from the previous year. So that is why we put in for this, allows our budget to get higher so that we can make changes and, and do things that we'd need to help.
Yes, and I can say that my ten years on the board, we've done this every year.
Yep.
It isn't cash. It's board.
Yep. It's like a credit card.
And the other thing I'd like to point out is we are going in the right direction with this deficit. I'm really proud of the efforts of people in the district.
Since Melanie started, we were at like two point one, and so we've come down significantly in her three years.
Right, and especially with twenty-eight more students served, it's very impressive. So I would move to approve this.
Mead will second. Mead?
And we will roll the call.
Okay. Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Ben Ricefight?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thank you. More about the school budget review committee.
Yeah, the administration recommends, recommends the approval of this request. This is again for spending authority. These are excess costs that we were over in educating our English proficiency allocation for the year. So it's just allowing us to recoup those for the next fiscal year.
I would move to approve.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
I, I didn't know, Steve, if you saw the question I submitted, but it, it, it's very official that we have to, and that it's true, correct, complete, and that we comply with all applications. So how can we as the board verify those? Like, I, I don't know how to check those. I mean, I, I trust that, I mean, most of it looks like it's instruction, which I'm assuming is the salaries of the employees that we have there. So it just seems like the way it's worded in that, you know, with all the code, it just seems very official. And so I just, I didn't know if you had a chance to put that together or?
No, I didn't, I didn't see your question. I was, been out all day today. My wife is in the emergency room last night, so I did not see your question. It came after yesterday.
Okay, um, so.
Most of this is just all salary and benefits related to where we assign contracts to and payroll.
So our employees that are, that are strictly hired for those positions, it's, it's basically you just added all of them up, and that's where you came up with that total?
And then what happens if we overspend in those, those overages are what we're allowed to ask for for the, in the next fiscal year.
So these are
To get the spending authority to, because we actually use the cash in this current year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And it's like, to me, like Steve has already certified and we're approving that. Is that correct with the timestamp that's on there?
Say that again.
Um, where it has the EL excess cost certified nine seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Did you submit and certify, and we're just approving that?
Correct, yeah. We had, it has to be, had to been certified previously to, on the fifteenth. If you don't want us to have the spending authority, then we don't approve it.
Okay.
So again, I would move to approve the school budget review, English language learners allowance cost issue.
Ben Ricefight will second.
Okay, thank you.
We'll start with Mead.
Yes.
Ben Ricefight?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Next will be the huddle contract extension with additional services.
Jared Zare, he'll come up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello. How's it going? Questions you guys have for me?
I had a few just kind of pertaining to the additional cost. I looked at several neighboring districts and saw that it was more in line with what we've been paying before. My main questions were the additional cameras, the portable ones. Where will those be used? Where will they go?
I mean, there's kind of endless possibilities of where they could go. You can move them for each event really if you need to, so. I think about some of our so, so-called premium events like Show Queer Invitational and the Winger Wrestling Tournament. That would give us the opportunity to have better angles on some of those things as far as like, and the PAC right now, the only camera is the one that's up top that you see the whole stage, which is fine, but with Show Queer, like there's such intricate movements and stuff and facial expressions and things like that, where I think if you had cameras positioned closer to the stage and the kids, like you're gonna, that's gonna come through a little bit better. Same with the, with the wrestling tournament, you've got the cameras that are in the middle of the gym and shows the whole gym, but if you can have a camera position where it's coming down on top of the mat, so you can see like kind of an aerial view of, of the action, I think there's a lot of benefit and production value to some things like that.
There'd be possibility for like elementary schools when there are live streaming events for parents, because we've had a lot of And then I guess the other question, the offsetting advertising, of course, sounds great. What, what do you project for that or how do you think that would compare to previous years? What's your plan?
So I did some digging through old documents, and I couldn't find anything that gave like a total of what kind of sponsorship money was coming through. The only thing I could find were packages that they had, I think, solicited businesses with, which ranged from anywhere from like a hundred dollars for kind of a mention on the live stream to like a thousand dollars for like sponsoring an entire game or event. One thing in the conversations with the Athletic Booster Club is that they've been getting lots of inquiries about sponsorships and advertisements. They had asked about like the video boards at the stadium and in the gym, which we've got some limitations on what we can do with those. So the live stream is kind of that big untapped market, because like we don't have a limitation on that like we do with the, with the video board, so. I just think that there's, yeah, lots of opportunities to have places sponsor games. If you think about having four to five home football games per year, those are kind of random events. You've got the marching band invitational, the Show Queer Invitational, the winger. If you could somehow pull a couple, a couple thousand dollars in advertising, which I think is on the low end of what we could pull in, now you're already talking eighteen to twenty thousand dollars just from a handful of events, which would kind of make up that cost of jumping from that twenty-three thousand dollar price number to forty thousand dollar for the second year, so. But also included in that too is, uh, there's a curriculum to help teach students about like production value and how to be broadcasters, which has been something we've gotten lots of inquiries this fall about. As far as providing like public address announcers for some of our lower level games instead of just the varsity games, that's something I talked to Dr. Dack about last week, and she's on board with trying to provide the same experience for our lower level teams as we do the varsity teams, so. That would be a place where we could start to train some of those kids to, of like what it means to be a broadcaster and be able to kind of create a wider experience as far as what we can offer.
Do you anticipate then that the revenues would go into athletics activities or into booster club from advertising sales?
I think that's to be determined. I mean indirectly or directly, it's going to end up with athletics and activities depending on what the event is. Because even if it does go to the booster club, then that frees up money from our school accounts to do some different things that maybe weren't allowed, that we weren't able to do before.
And I think my last one might be more Steve oriented, but maybe you can answer too, Jared, is, are we looking at, do we use pebble funds, general funds?
Pebble. Yeah, pebble.
That's all I've got, sorry.
I'm going to jump in just with a concern. I have a concern if the district is paying for this, which I don't have a problem with necessarily, but I have a concern if we're paying for it and then we're not, then the revenue from the advertising is going to a different group. That doesn't seem quite right. I mean, we had the same discussion just in the spring about staffing of concession stands and things like that. So this is something I would like to be thought about.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
And I would say, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but like the revenue that we bring in from the varsity group for those video boards and for like the scores table advertisements, I believe that money does go into the general
That all goes into the general fund, yep. And then we do projects, like we did the lining of the, the outfield's on both softball and, and baseball this year with that money to get the field more rounded and to do some repairs within the bullpen areas and some like concession stuff.
I think where it gets kind of great is if, if the boosters are selling advertisements, then like I wouldn't have a problem with them getting a portion of that because they're doing the work too. But I think I, I would have a real personal problem if they were getting all the proceeds.
With it being an annual ongoing expense.
Right, yeah, if we're paying for it.
We can do some discussions on that.
I don't know. How long have we been paying twenty-three thousand dollars for huddle, do you know?
At least four that I At least four that I know of.
So, yeah, so I think it's been a pretty big expense for multiple years, but no revenue coming in, so.
Right.
At least not as far as I know.
Anyone else? We're moving to the motion.
Okay, I'll motion to approve the huddle contract extension.
Ben Ricefight will second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And another roll call.
Okay, we're up to Ben Ricefight.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Thanks for your work on this.
Thank you.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay. Repair of nutrition services equipment.
Yeah, um, administration recommends that the board approve. Goodwin Tucker is a vendor for equipment repair and preventive maintenance related to, uh, nutrition services, uh, repairs for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Um, as you can read in the details there, Jesse did a R F P, um, for quotes and stuff for the maintenance work. Um, one company came in, uh, C S I with, um, better pricing on most of the repairs, but they do not repair several other items of her equipment. And once you put the R F P out, um, for the, for this, the, the, I think it's the ovens or rational ovens were not something that C S I, um, will, can repair. So, that's why she wants to award the contract to Goodman Tucker. Cause she's asked for an overall piece for that bid, for that.
I submitted this question. She, you probably didn't see it, but.
Yeah, I did see, I did see that.
Um, the, we've gotten in the past like the rubric with a grading sheet. I, this one makes sense to me because of that, but for like this one and the next one too, like is that, was there, was there a rubric that was used? Or something that was used?
She, she had a rubrics. That's what the fifty point and the one hundred point possibilities were. And that's where C S I was a little bit higher, but she did not, um, put the pointy, her grading system on that.
Okay.
I talked with her about that this, today after I was home and.
Okay.
She's gonna, we're gonna put those on going forward on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
And related to that question, I think both of our questions that we submitted were kind of for D and E. Are we making sure we're posting these onto the district website when we have R F Ps and can we do that to help?
Um, we, we try most of the time, yes, when we do them. Um, there are, um, the board policy does say we do not need to do it for, uh, up to a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And then, but we try to do those for anything up to fifty, uh, that's over fifty, um, cause that is board policy. What, the way board policy is written, we do an R F P. Otherwise, we only have to have multiple quotes for that.
Yeah, I just noticed with two and three bids on the last two, it might help drive those up a little bit.
Right.
I would move to approve the nutrition service equipment repair and preventative maintenance agreement.
Young will second.
Young? Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And it's time to talk about snow removal.
Yep, the re- administration recommends approving, uh, Brilliant Borders as our snow removal for the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven season. Um, if you look at the two proposals that were received, their pricing was substantially lower than the others.
Isn't that who we've had?
Yes, who we've had last, I think, three or four years, yeah.
I think it was the same two companies from last year that.
Same two companies from last year, yeah. He asked for, he put out several requests and didn't get any of but those two in.
I would move to approve the snow removal contract for twenty-five through twenty-seven.
Mead will second.
Mead, okay.
And we'll roll call.
And we're up to Williams.
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Hauser?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes.
Mead?
Yes.
Ben Ricefight?
Yes.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. And talking about the copier for the activities department.
Yep, uh, this is to approve, uh, a new copier for the activities office. It'll be, come out of the Pebble funds for this copier machine. Uh, maintenance contract will come out of the general fund. And we have an ongoing maintenance contract set up with M M I T for all the machines within the district.
Do we have a contract with M M I T in place or do we not?
Yes, for the maintenance contract, we do, yes.
I would move to approve this purchase of the activities copier.
Young will second. Who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I would move to adjourn.
Mead?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I, motion, meeting adjourned.